Okay, aloha everyone. Good morning. Mahalo for joining us today. We would like to get started with a pule that will be offered up by Commissioner.
A pule kakou. Mahalo kea kua for a beautiful day to be here in service of our beneficiaries and our department and our kuliana as we gather to do the business that has been set for us today. We thank you for the opportunity to be of service and we thank you for the guidance and help of all in the department who are working today to explain a very complex, a very tedious but a very important information that we need to be aware of and we need to understand. So we thank you for their efforts. We pray for all those in the department, including our leadership, as we continue to fulfill our kuliana to our beneficiaries to try and fulfill the vision set by Kue'oe for us. We invite the presence of the Holy Spirit to be in this room as we deliberate, as we talk, as we try to comprehend. We pray for all those who are participating, both in person, those who are virtual and online, and those who have some kuliana for this subject matter but for whatever reason are not able to make this meeting. We pray for their ability to comprehend this subject matter and to understand what's being presented at this workshop. So we come together very humble, very appreciative, and we thank you for helping us to work through today's agenda. All these things we ask in the name of our Lord and Savior Jesus the Christ. Amen.
Amen. The meeting of the Hawaiian Homes Commission is called to order. The meeting is being held live and in person at Halepono'i, 915420 Kapole Parkway, Kapole Oahu, and virtually via Zoom. I am Randi Awol, Vice Chairman of the Hawaiian Homes Commission, and today's date is Friday, June 16, 2023. The time is 10:26 a.m. Kalamei, and Chair Kali Watson was called away to a meeting with the governor, so I will conduct today's workshop until such time he returns. Mahalo. Leah, can you please do the roll call?
Commissioner Awol.
Here.
Commissioner Freitas.
Here.
Commissioner Naum.
Here.
Commissioner Kurekini.
Hi.
Commissioner Kukui.
Here.
Commissioner Nomo is excused. Commissioner Nevis.
Hi.
Commissioner Tariya.
Chair Watson is excused. We have seven numbers.
Okay, so we will begin with public testimony, and once that is finished, I will turn the time over to our acting administrative officer Brian Furuto, Furuto, sorry, and his team for the budget workshop. Public testifiers can testify now or when an item is called up for deliberation. I just do want to say to our commissioners, I noticed in the presentation, we have around 65 slides to go through. I would ask, to whatever extent possible, we try to allow the presenter to get through every slide, make notes of those slides that you have questions on, and let's try to consolidate that at the end of the presentation if possible. Before I call the first testifier, I would like to ask that testimonies be kept to three minutes to allow all voices to be heard and to allow the commission to get to the budget presentation in a timely manner. Mahalo. Go ahead.
If I don't meet people of agenda, I just have a correction on the agenda. If they could correct my name, it's not initial L.
It's initial K.
Okay, we'll do that. Thank you.
All right, mahalo.
Okay, so do we have any people wanting to testify virtually? Please make yourself know. Okay, we have Jermaine Myers indicating a desire to testify, so we're going to start with Jermaine.
Aloha Chair. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Aloha. Good morning.
Aloha. Thank you. I was hoping to be there presently today in person, but unfortunately, I just got home. I wanna, my, my reason for coming to testify today is, in regards to the budget, I didn't see a line item there for geothermal. And that is my purpose for attending today's meeting in support of geothermal. We just had a neighborhood board meeting on Tuesday, and the Hawaii Energy Office came to give us a presentation regarding hydrocarbon. And these are huge tanks that would have to be placed in different communities in order to help with the energy crisis that we're experiencing as, as a state, as a nation, as a world. These devices that I'm on right now, they need electricity, our home refrigeration, our air conditioning, et cetera. And the state has made it a mandate that we need to go into green energy. When I look at windmill, besides the fact that they're huge, it's cognizant upon having wind, so it's not a reliable source because wind doesn't happen, say, all the time. When I look at solar farms, it's the same thing. You need the sun, and the sun isn't, is up, not, it's not up 24 hours a day. I did a lot, a lot, a lot of research about geothermal, and I'm hoping that the PIG will come out with some of the things that I had found online. For example, in Japan, you know, they have all these hot water springs, which is, it shows you that under the ground, you know, there's all these geothermal energy, and in fact, Japan has the most, they have the third largest geothermal energy sources in the world, but yet they haven't tapped into it. They barely make even 1%, and that's because of fear, fear mongering with some of the, the hot springs owners, the spas, the hot springs, the outdoor hot springs where they take a bath. Anyway, but Japan, the leadership in Japan realizes that this is one of the most reliable sources. And I'm hoping that in the budget, I saw that one of the budget, in the definition, it said that we could receive government matching funds with government entities, city, state, federal. And I'm hoping that DHTA would look into this and look into getting support, and most especially using our lands, some of our lands is, in order to put in these geothermal sites for us to try to see if we can tap into this resource and energy, but in order to support our lohui in, in getting energy sources to lower their electric bill, but also to help the state in its carbon footprint and maybe make some money off of it in order, after the $600 million is spent, we'll have another source of income for the department. And so this in summary is what I, And so this in summary is what I'm here today, and hopefully in my J-Agenda, I can spend a little bit of time in giving that PowerPoint presentation that I was working on, very short one. I know I have time limitations and so, and I have other things that I wanted to talk about in J-Agenda next week, but, or at the end of the month, but I definitely wanted to share with you today that within your budget, can you please take into consideration adding a line item, maybe 3 million, maybe 6 million, something to show the state or the federal government that DHTL is in it and that we will, you know, provide land, but also financial matching support. Maybe the government can give more than what we give, maybe we can be just 10% of the funding, or maybe 5%, and rest of it comes from federal government, which is interested in green energy. I just read an article last month, and which I wanted to share with you. So that's it, Chair. I wanted to be respectful of my time allocation, and thank you for letting me share my mana'o with you all today. Thank you, commissioners.
Mahalo Jermaine, thank you for your testimony today. Commissioners, do we have any mana'o for Jermaine? Okay, if not, thank you Jermaine. We're gonna move on to the next testifier, which is Ke'Koa Inomoto.
I don't have any testimony. I just was logging in to hear the hearing. Thank you Chair.
Okay, mahalo Ke'Koa Blossom Fittera, are you on? Okay Blossom, we will come back to you if you can hear us and you're not ready. Do we have any additional testifiers wanting to speak virtually to the commission? Okay, if not, we will move forward with the actual presentation.
Morning Commissioners.
Morning.
Aloha, and good morning. My name is Brian Furuto. I am the Acting Administrative Services Officer. I have not had the pleasure and the opportunity to meet all of you. Chair, Deputy Chair, and Richard keep me in my office, so they only let me out like every now and then, so this is one of those times. But thank you for your time this morning, and thank you for allowing me to lead this budget workshop. So that it's clear for those particularly who are tuning in via Zoom, the purpose of this morning's commission meeting is to provide an introduction to our budget process, an overview of funds, a discussion of our development budget, and which is going to be led by Darrell Ng from our Land Development Division, and a summary, only a summary of our FY24 budget requests. Next week, we'll get a little bit more into the details for FY24. Better, sorry. I normally talk loud. So without further ado, we'll dive into it. I, I know Commissioner, it's a big presentation, so we're just trying to summarize things. The full packet, I think you guys have with you, so we're not gonna get into too much detail on that. Quick agenda, we're gonna talk about state budget process, talk about Article 12, Section 1, purposes. I'll give you, give you folks a fund summary and some definitions, talk about the development budget, which is when Darrell will come up, the loans budget, the operating budget, and then our projected fund balances. So first things first, budget process, just so we're on the same page, state fiscal year is from July 1st to June 30th. The state budget's on a two-year basis or a biennium basis. The current biennium is FB 2325, which encompasses FY24 and FY25. One real important thing is that we actually have two request processes. The first one is to the legislature through BNF for an appropriation. The second one is a request to release the allocation, and that's made to BNF, to the governor. The appropriation period for operating funds is only one year, and so that July 1st, June 30th, and then CIP funds, anything bond related, is three years. So funds do lapse, anything unspent does lapse on June 30th of the appropriation period, the end of that appropriation period. In terms of budget prep and development appropriations and allocations, all are based, all of these actions are based on Council on Revenues projections, and Council on Revenues is a little-known body appointed by the governor, the Speaker of the House, and the Senate. There are a bunch of economists who know a lot more than most of us on state economy, world economy. They come up with four projections per year. With regard to the budget process, that revolves, the requests, the appropriation, the allocation revolves around these Council on Revenues dates. So the governor, the Chief Justice, and OHA Chair, through Budget and Finance, use the September 10th forecast for the budget request, I'm sorry, to develop their budget requests. The legislature uses the January 10th and the May 15th forecast to make the appropriation, and the governor through BNF uses the June 1st forecast to make allocations, as well as give us budget instructions for the current fiscal year. These are some important budget dates, or not really dates, but budget months. We don't really have dates on these, but this is when these important things pop up. So with regard to the executive branch, judicial branch, and OHA, in June, the current month, the budget execution policies are issued, and that is for the fiscal year that's going to begin on July 1st. In August, budget prep instructions are issued by Budget and Finance. When we talk budget prep, that's for the upcoming legislative session. In October, departments submit budget requests to BNF for review. November, the governor's recommendations are then made to the departments about what he's going, he or she is going to allow in the budget that's going to be submitted to the legislature. And in December, the final budget request is submitted to the legislature. I should note that in October, well, any time between September and November is another important budget action by HHC, the commission, when we come before you to request what we're gonna be asking the governor and the legislature for. In terms of legislative actions, January Committee Budget Hearings begin, and I think most of us are familiar with that, when departments are brought forward and we get the 20-degree questions. In March, the House completes the first draft of the budget. House always goes first, and then sends the budget to the Senate. In April, the Senate completes the second draft of the budget, and also in April, there's a budget conference when both sides come in and hash out the differences. What's really important is actually this past year, so if you can imagine, there's thousands of line items, and then the Senate and the House line up across from each other. They only talk about the items in which they disagree on. We weren't even mentioned because the House and the Senate basically gave what the governor asked for, and, and so we weren't even a discussion item, which, you know, in many ways is good, especially when you look at the, the revenue projections coming in right now, and everything is going south on us, so it worked out for us in a way. And finally, in May, the legislature completes its work and then sends it to the governor, the bill to the governor for signature. So very quickly, I know you know all of this, but, but this is what we base building our budget around, and that's Article 12, Section 1. And in Article 12, it talks about a sufficient sums budget, and there's four purposes behind that. The first one is the development of home, agriculture, farm, and ranch lots. The second is loans, home agriculture, aquaculture, farm and ranch loans. The third are rehabilitation projects, educational, political, social, et cetera. And then finally, the administration and operating budget of the department, that's the fourth purpose. In terms of our funds, we have nine funds that we work with. There's two special, five trust, and two revolving funds, but we also have external funding sources. So we'll quickly go through these. Again, you have a deeper explanation of them within your packet. Hawaiian Home Administration Account is the first special fund. It's also known as our admin account. It's used for department operating costs in the absence of, and also to supplement general funds, and the source of this is our general lease revenues. One important thing to note here is, this fund requires the legislature to actually give us an appropriation. We also have the Hawaiian Home, Homeland's Revenue Bond Special Fund, and this is used for payment of debt service obligations on bonds, as well as a reserve account as required by any bond resolutions. The source of these funds is the Hawaiian Home Administration Account. Our first trust fund is Hawaiian Homes, Hawaiian Homeland's Trust Fund. The account was set up to receive payments, which started from the state in 1995 and went through 2015 for 20 years. It was 20 annual payments of $30 million, which many refer to as the first 600. The remaining balance of those funds is currently invested. Next is the Native Hawaiian Rehabilitation Fund. Its uses are to, are to fund educational, political, social, and cultural programs that improve the general welfare and conditions of native Hawaiians. Source of these funds are from ceded land payments, 30% of receipts stemming from, are all, 30% of these receipts also come from previous sugarcane lands. The Hawaiian Home Operating Fund is an interesting one. It's actually split up into two. There is the operating fund and the development fund. It was combined in 1985 for administrative purposes into one fund, but they're still treated separately. The source of this fund are loan and investment interests, and monies received from any other source not prescribed or designated for other funds. The operating portion is used for activities that support homesteads, appraisals, consultants, and other staff services. And the development portion is used for lot improvement and development, improvement to assets, consultants, equipment, land acquisition, et cetera. This portion of the fund, the development fund, requires the governor's approval before we can use it. Continuing with trust funds, Hawaiian Home Trust Fund is used for loan programs such as our FHA 247 and our USDA guaranteed loan program. The source of this account is the Hawaiian Homes Administration Account. The Hawaiian Homes Receipt Fund is used for transferring funds, really to pass through to the admin account, the HH Trust Fund, and any other loan fund. The source of this comes from loan interest income, as well as investment income. There's the Hawaiian Home Loan Fund, which is payment of net proceeds when a homestead lease is given, so we'll use this to make payment on those net proceeds. The source of this is a principal from the repayment of loans coming from the Hawaiian Home Loan Fund. And the Hawaiian Home General Fund, this is used for various purposes, including home repairs and maintenance, purchases, or construction of a home. It can also be used for livestock and farm equipment and farm loans. The source of this are the principal repayment of loans, and this fund, the note on this is, this one used to be many funds, loan funds, and it was consolidated into one. This is external funds now, and, you know, our biggest, well, one of our largest donors continues to be the state of Hawaii, right? So we get general funds. It's our primary source of appropriated funding, and it's used for all purposes related to conducting state business, and this is used by all state departments. Geo-bonds are bonds issued for large purchases or construction, including R&amp;M of existing facilities. General funds are used for repayment of debt service on the bonds, that's why it's called general obligation bonds. Revenue bonds are issued for large purchases, basically it's the same as geo-bonds, however, the revenues from income-producing activities are used for repayment of the debt service. And finally, federal funds, which we get quite a bit of, are basically allocated to us through Congress, through a department, or through a program. Use of federal funds is for a particular and designated purpose. I am now gonna hand it over to Darrell, who's gonna talk about the FY24 development budget.
Good morning Commissioners. Okay, Darrell Ng sitting in for Stuart Matanaga, or Acting Land Development Administrator. Couple of general slides here. I'll first show the breakdown between our Purpose 1 and Purpose 4 projects. Roughly about half and half, 55% for lot development, and about 45% for repair and maintenance. This is a little skewed because, of course, we're not including the Act 279 funds, so that would put a lot more dollars into the lot development side. But overall, if you notice from past budgets, our percentage of development and the percentage of repair and maintenance have been slowly getting to that 50/50 line. The more subdivisions we develop, of course, the more follow-up maintenance as the years go by, so I think I see that this is a trend over the next few years, that we're gonna be slowly getting to a 50/50 between new development and maintaining the previously developed lots or subdivisions. This slide shows a breakdown between the trust funds we're proposing to use and legislative appropriations, about 44% being trust funds and 56% being ledger appropriations. Again, this doesn't show the Act 279 funds, which will make the percentages a little different. So I'll go through the individual projects. We're following basically the same order that we have in your proposed budget. First is Iskapole, Iskapole 2 Ka Ulo Ka Kai. The only project we're showing on the budget is from a past project, Iskapole 2B. This is to repay US RD funds, grant and loan funds that were used for wastewater and water development. The reason it's still on here is we're having some admin problems with USDA in clearing up the paperwork. The idea is that once the loan and grant are transferred over to Hawaiian Homes, we'll pay back the loan portion of it and finish up the project. So we have staff, both in LDE and planning, working on this with the USDA. The other Kolo Kai projects, 2C, we're expecting groundbreaking next month, that's using CIP and trust funds. The other project will be using Act 279 funds. For Waimanalo, we're asking for 1.75 in trust funds to continue the design and engineering for this project. We have a consultant on board now that during the planning, will be coming out with an EA before the end of the year, and then these design and engineering funds will be a follow-up to that EA. We're, we're looking at developing a number of, combination of subsistence ag and residential lots. So roughly about, well, anywhere between 49 subsistence ag lots, 227 residential lots, or a combination of somewhere between 71 residential lots and 48 agricultural lots, so something in that range, but those will be detailed in the environmental assessment. This is a legislative appropriation of $1 million for acquisition of KS lands, Kamehameha schools lands in Hawaii Kai. It was a specific allocation of $1 million for that particular parcel. for that particular parcel. One problem is that appraisals are coming in at between 4 and 5 million. So in order to execute the conveyance, we'd have to use another 3 or 4 million in trust or other funds to do this. So we are negotiating with Kamamea Schools and doing our due diligence. And this is going to be separate from any other acquisition of RFPs or, you know, that we have going out. Our next project is Kele'kele Wa'uhuli on Maui. Where we have 8.5 million already encumbered for construction of Phase 2A. This coming fiscal year, we're asking for 32 million for construction of Phase 2B, which is about 61 lots. And we will be using legislative appropriations for that. The next phase would be Phase 3, 76 lots. And we're requesting $1 million for designs in trust funds. Also on Maui, villages of Leali, Village 1B. Total of about 250 lots. Our first phase engineering would be for about 86 single-family lots. Phase 2B, then that would require about a half million in trust funds. We also have 9 million in legislative funds, specifically for highway and parkway improvements. Also on Maui is Pulehunui. We have 1.75 million already encumbered for the wastewater system. Next phase will be using 3 million in ledge funds for improvement and infrastructure. I believe that's for designs. Our next is also an ongoing project, Pu'Unani Homesteads. We have 22.6, or 22.7 in Act 279 funds. Your mark for this, and adding another 4 million in legislative funds. This will result in 137 turnkey lots and 24 vacant lots. Next is Kohiki Nui roadway improvements. These are Kulianna lots that were awarded some time ago. First phase of road improvements was completed in November 2020. We're asking for another 1.5 million in trust funds to do additional road improvements. Completed portion is shown in red on this, and the next phase is shown in blue. A new project coming up is for Kalamuula agricultural lots. We're looking at 51 subsistence ag lots, asking for $1 million in trust funds for the engineering contact that we're now negotiating. This is right next to the existing Kalamuula residential lots. Also on Molokai is the Naeva Agricultural Subdivision. We're looking at putting in 66, infrastructure for 66 lots, asking for 250,000 in trust funds for some additional design work. On the Big Island, the Hawaii Community College Model Homes Project. This is an ongoing agreement between Hawaiian Homelands and Hawaii Community College, where the students design and construct the home on Hawaiian Homelands. They charge it only for the materials, which is about 325,000 per house. And they do one home a year. This year's project will be number 26, so almost a quarter century of work. Of course, it's a great deal for the homesteaders. They get a house that's very much below market rates. And the students themselves get that practical on, hand-on experience. Also on the Big Island, Ka'uu Water System. Phase 1, 100 million gallon water tank and filling station is in construction. We expect it to be finished by the end of the year. Phase 2, we're looking for design monies of about 616,000 of trust funds to replace the, replace and upgrade pressure-regulating valve stations. Some are shown on this map. And also 3 million trust funds to design Ka'uu agricultural lots. These are from, I think, from way back in the acceleration period. It was a long-promised commitment that we'd given to beneficiaries. On the other side of the Big Island, Lala Milo. We're looking at $1 million in trust funds. This project has been on hold since 2015 due to the UXO issue. So these funds are probably be going to delay costs that we owe the contractor. He has been onboard since 2015 and waiting for us to, like I said, resolve those UXO issues. Another project on the Big Island is acquisition of a potential well site. We'll be using 9.9 million in legislative funds to acquire the site, and then additional funds, of course, to develop it. But this will serve villages of Laia Pua, as well as getting credit for other Big Island projects. On Kauai, we're asking for 250,000 in trust funds to do planning for Kulianna Subsistence Agriculture Awards Program. Also on Kauai, this is a master plan for the Wa'ilua area. Moving on to Purpose 4, repair and maintenance. We're asking for 6 million to design the next phase of Papukalia sewer remediation. The total estimated cost would be about 45 million. In Nanakuli, we're looking for about 6 million in trust funds for construction of Nanakuli sewer systems upgrades. Also, another sewer improvement project is in Waimeanalo. We're planning to use 18 million in legislative funds to repair and face existing DHL sewers. Future actions in this, for this project include conversion of on-site disposal systems and a pump station and new collector. That would probably be another 12 million or so. I'll put a note here. A lot of these sewer system projects are to comply with Act 125 of the 2017 Legislative Session, which required conversion of cesspools by 2050. For Princess Kahenu, we're looking at, again, sewer line replacement and repairs. We're asking, we're planning to use 9.4 million in legislative appropriations for this construction. For villages of Kapalae, two existing villages, Village 6 and Village 8, Maloahai and Kapia. Well, we're looking at doing remedial work to bring those sewer systems up to standard so we can turn them over to the city and county for maintenance, asking for 110,000 in legislative appropriations. This is the, in Nanakuli, repair and rehabilitation of deteriorating and cracked sections of drainage laterals and fencing. Now projecting use of 4.25 million in legislative funds. Also in Nanakuli are rehabilitation of a section of the Nanakuli Channel, located on the Ma'ka side, Ma'ka side of Frackton Highway. And rehabilitation of a pedestrian bridge located over the Sewall Channel. This is next to a school site. Looking at a 400 to 3,000 in DHL trust funds. In Waimea, number of cracked and damaged sidewalks and stormwater basins that need the repair. Projecting to use about 2 million in legislative funds. In Waimeanalo, upgrading the existing drainage infrastructure by providing about 1,000 Lino feet of drainage pipe and 200 Lino feet of open channel with the box cover under Kamamea Highway. This is a covert that goes under the highway and out to the ocean. We'll need about 950,000 for legislative funds and 5 million in future funds for construction. Also in Waimeanalo, another drainage channel. We have, we'll be repairing drainage channel walls. A lot of these concrete structures are failing and needing to be replaced. So that would be about 6.2 million in DHL trust funds. And another drainage project in Waimeanalo. This is to survey and clear drainage channel and stabilize embankments to protect leased lands. This is further Ma'ka of the existing channels that we already repaired. This will take about 150,000 in ledger appropriations. And construction will cost about 1.2 million in future funds. Also in Waimeanalo, similar to the Kapia and Maloahai project, this will be remedial work to sewer systems so that they can be turned over, accepted by the city and county for maintenance. This will cost about 400,000 in legislative appropriations. In Kalamuula and Kapakea on Molokai, hydraulic and hydrologic studies to design drainage systems, drainage system and mitigation in the streams throughout the area. There's about, I think, nine project areas. So for designs, we're looking at about 290,000 for Kalamuula and about 450,000 for Kapakea Oneali'i. On Makua on the Big Island, this is a picture taken in November 2020 of junk cars that just accumulated on our parcels there. And we're looking at another 200,000 for more cars that have accumulated since then. It's an ongoing project, ongoing problem, of course. Back to Ka'uu on the Big Island. Just, we're looking at 2.9 million in legislative appropriations to design the relocation of an existing water line, which goes through the existing pastoral lots and move them out into the South Point Road right away. And also install water laterals for meters to the 25 pastoral lots. Again, also on the Big Island, in Waimea area, for Lala Milo Phase 1, we still need to do some infrastructure and offsite roadway improvements. A total of about a half million, both in trust funds. Laia Pua, an ongoing maintenance project to clear, maintain fire breaks, both around vacant lots, and there are also some archaeological and endangered plant preserves that we need to protect from fire. We'll be using about 800,000 in trust funds. And in Waimea area, Pukapu Water System. Repairs and improvements costing about 200 million, I'm sorry, 2 million in legislative appropriations. In Anahola, continuing improvement to the dam and reservoir system. And that concludes our portion of the project, of the program. I'll open to questions. I have staff with me to answer questions.
So a mahalo for your presentation, Brian. Mahalo for yours as well. For guys like me, repetition is really important. And it's nice that we have something to fall back on in the way of reference material on the budget. So I really do appreciate that. I do have a question, Leali'i B. I think I saw 155 units for townhouses. Oh, wait, wait, wait. 155 multifamily townhouse units. Slide 25.
Yeah, that's an option for the increment 2. Either in 95 single-family residential lots or 155 multifamily. Decision has been made on which way to go then.
Okay, so I bring that up, and I'm not sure if I'm addressing the right person. But I bring it up because, as I recall, the Maui survey submitted by our beneficiaries, the vast majority want single-family residential lots. Added to that is many in Leali'i today on the smaller lots. Over the years, they've indicated, they know it's too late to do anything. But the lesson learned is, as lessees have to house more generational families, they're realizing now that those smaller lots have not served them well. So I just want to mention that as part of our discussion.
I believe the environmental assessment process will be starting soon. And so that would be a good time for the beneficiaries to add their manao to the process and state their preference for either single-family or multifamily.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions?
Sure.
Commissioner Teruya.
A hard act to follow, but let me work on this one. Thank you, Darryl. So my question is on the proposal acquisition A on EVA. And by looking at the spreadsheet that we have here, can I go, can I touch this? Okay, so in February, we had a spreadsheet. Okay, so in February, we had a spreadsheet on A, Eva Village. I mean, was it called Eva Village at that time? I'm sorry. Yeah, Eva Village slash nothing. So that was, that was done and that, that budget in there was seventeen million, six hundred forty-six. I don't know if you have the numbers on that. That's in February. So then we had another one revised in March of two thousand twenty-three of Eva Village Proposal A. Eva Village, now you added Haseko in that one. And so in that one, you have acquisition as same seventeen million, six hundred forty-six. Okay, that didn't change. So when I got to see this one that I received on June fourteen, Proposal A, Eva Village, Haseko. The numbers changed. So from that, it went down to development twenty million. And then it went down actually from the original numbers. So this one went down. The seventeen was okay. But if you take notice on the development, why did that change? Is there something that? The funding in that, why, why did that change on the development part?
We're still negotiating the, the purchase and development agreement with Haseko. The original numbers they had given us in their proposal to sell the project to us. They included, I think they included some of the development, the pre-development costs that they'd already. Already spent such as planning, design, permitting. They, they may have included some of those into the acquisition costs.
So from my understanding, Haseko will be the developers. And is this from Act two seventy-nine funding on this proposal A of a village?
We're looking at using the Ha'azha fund for the acquisition part and two seventy-nine fund for the development part.
And, and is this, is this moving forward actually because?
It's moving forward.
It's funny that I didn't hear it from the department. But then I got invited by a senator to go to a community meeting where this came up. And it was amazing that I didn't know anything about it. And so that kind of got me like, okay, you know, so there is, there was a community. I don't call it a consultation, but it was a community meeting in Eva. Quite two meetings, one in the senior area of that facility area. And so they described the entire, Haseko did the whole presentation. And my question was why we didn't have anybody from the department? And I asked that question and they answered, well, they didn't want to come. And I thought it was important that the department had some, a staff there to do this presentation at Eva, on Eva Village. To the adjacent neighbors that would be affected. I thought it was really important. It was the Francisco Visco and some other adjacent neighbors on Renton Road. And that whole area where this proposal A. So that's what I wanted to bring up.
You wanna, Lehu has been taking the lead on this particular acquisition, so she should be better able to answer.
Thank you.
Aloha, Commissioner Teria, mahalo for your question. So the reason why this conversation is going on is we have yet to have finalized the agreement. So although the RFP went out, Haseko responded, we don't have anything in writing. But Haseko wanted to go out because they had gone through their process to develop this lot. And they felt before this process with the DHL, they at least wanted to circle back. The intention at this point is not to change any of the plans that Haseko has because they're so far along in the development. So it was really Haseko asking that they go and follow up with some of the communities and elected officials they had discussed before. DHL didn't feel it was appropriate at this time. One reason is we don't have, we don't have an agreement in place. Until we have an actual agreement in place that we finalize, I think it's appropriate. The second reason is typically our processes, we go to beneficiaries first. So we didn't feel comfortable going out to the community without going to beneficiaries first. That being said, there is a section one oh six out on this. In order to use Nahasda funds, we have to go through that process. And through that process now, the section one oh six process, anyone who's a native wine organization. Will get notice about this potential development. And so through that section one oh six process, we will likely be having conversations about the parcel. But again, the intention is to finalize the agreement. Until we have that agreement, I don't think we felt it was appropriate to go out and speak on behalf of the department without that. So I hope.
And I'm glad you clarified that because it was like, it was, I mean, people were totally upset. And, and so, you know, normally we go through a beneficiary consultation. And so, you know, for them to make a statement that they invited somebody from the department and they didn't want to show it just kind of caught me. And I, and I, I did mention that we do go through a beneficiary consultation. So I think this presentation was so premature. I mean, they got, they got the whole community all upset on this, this, this parcel that's coming up, you know? And so that kind of struck me and I wanted to bring it up with you, Darrell. So, but thank you for clarifying with that. The other thing I wanted to bring up, Darrell, it kind of, kind of reminded us is in the budget. You folks, the VOCA, we, we're still going to be responsible for VOCA payments? Is that what's going to happen? Is nothing changing with the VOCA?
Yes, this, what we're doing with, on this Kopea and Maloahai is regarding the sewers. Are we remediating or bringing them back, back up to standards? So that they can be turned over to the city and county for, for maintenance. The VOCA payments are for the homeowner association dues. That VOCA is claiming that because we had a lower density than originally planned. That their budget is falling short because there are that many households that they're not collecting dues from.
So being that, being that we didn't follow the, the MOU agreement that we didn't build these homes, we're still being charged from VOCA. This, what is this, monthly payments, yearly payments to them because we didn't follow the agreement in building that homes on the Kapalei, correct? And there's no way that the department can get out of that.
Well, the, the new Kopea Phase Two will add sixty lots. So that, that should bring, bring those overall numbers down a little bit. But I think we're still committed to any lot that we didn't build overall.
And the last one, real closing, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry. I don't, I still don't see Miley Village in here, Voice of America. Can you kind of tell me when this is, just when that will be coming up under the Act two seven-nine funding for that particularly project in Maili?
We're still having problems getting responses from both State Historic Preservation and Department of Health. State Historic Preservation on what to do with that large stone structure that goes across part of the property. And State Department of Health because potential leftover contaminants from the, the old Voice of America time. PCBs and other stuff that were around from their electrical systems.
So do you think that we would lose the opportunity for that development to move forward with, with some of the Act two seven-nine funding?
Not necessarily. We, we, we've been actively pushing both, both of our sister agencies to give us a response to. We can finish up the environmental assessment process. And with that, we can go out with the request for proposals.
Okay, and I'll talk to you about Ulukakekui on, maybe on another meeting openly. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair.
Mahalo. Commissioner Ka'upu followed by Commissioner Nevis.
Hi, Darrell. The first one I had question about was slide twenty-three. That's your, an acquisition in Hawaii Kai from KS. So I'm trying to understand, we, we had, we have a million of, of funds under Act eighty-eight. But we have yet to negotiate a, a purchase price for that?
We're still going through the appraisal process on that. But it looks like it would be about somewhere between four and five million.
What is, what is, so the, the, there's an agreement with KS that will, will pay, will buy it based upon the appraised value?
Right. We, we would do an appraisal and both wine homes as well as Kamamea schools would have to agree to that price based on the appraisal.
And then this one million that was, you know, provided by Act eighty-eight. You know, it always was intended that we would go find the remainder of the purchase price.
I'm sorry, I missed the question.
It's the Hawaii Kai one?
Yep. That's the property we're showing on the screen now?
Yeah. So the, the note in, in the white box says one million under Act eighty-eight in two thousand twenty-one. I guess I'm just trying to confirm, we, we knew at the time that that, that wasn't enough to purchase the property. We would have to come up with additional funding based upon an appraisal and the appraised value.
That's correct.
Okay, and, and has there been any like way preliminary thought about? How many, how many houses or how many units can be developed on this parcel?
We haven't looked at that, but there's also a possibility of doing some commercial development there. That parcel is right across the street from the Hawaii Kai post office. So that's another possibility for that, that parcel, not just unnecessarily residential.
Okay, and, and who, who heads up the department's efforts to negotiate with KS and that kind of thing? Is that, is that your department?
I think this one is being handled by land, land management.
Kahana. Okay. My next one is slide. Twenty-eight. Kayiki Nui. So there's a note on the bottom of the slide. That you, you didn't mention, but it says twenty-eight unencumbered lots surveyed, property pin state, ready for award. So is that, that's current, that statement? Or is that, that was from some time ago?
I believe that's current.
So right now, there's twenty-eight lots that are ready to be awarded where?
Yeah, that's my understanding.
So then, and then Paula's group is, is kind of working on this to, to get these awards out at the moment, you know?
If there are lands or lots available, then we would have turned them over to CAD. I'm, I'm not sure what their schedule is.
Okay, but that's, but that's your understanding. There's twenty-eight unencumbered lots ready to go right now.
That's my understanding.
If we could find people who would take them. Move to slide thirty-three. This is Lalamilo. This is where you mentioned one million in trust funds primarily to fund delay costs. Because of the unexplored, unexploded ordinance issue. So in, in, for, for this particular contract. This million dollars of delay costs is, is that, that represents what, one year? One budget year of delay costs? And, and we've repeatedly done this every year, fund these delay costs? You have any idea? Seven years. So, so I guess my question on, on this kind of thing, when. Unexploded ordinance shows up. Isn't there some way that we can act of God or unforeseeable? And just cancel this part of the contract so that we, we're not subject to delay for keeping the contractor mobilized? Waiting for this to work its way out through whatever the resolution is? Why do we keep incurring the, the million dollar annually?
Well, this, this is covered. He's our project manager for the project.
So Goodfellow was awarded the contract back in two thousand thirteen and they had started the work. And they, they got. About eighty percent completed. And just for the fact that UXO was presented as a challenge. They had to have UXO support, construction support to mitigate that, that issue. And we had stopped the work from back then until now. So the delay claims are amounting yearly. But to negotiate for a new contractor to come in and finish up the work and take on the liability of work. That was already done in a outwaze that, that situation of paying the delay claims versus bidding out. To have a new contractor come in and assume that liability. I don't know if that makes sense.
No, it makes sense, but, but so now we're seven years out, so roughly seven million dollars of, roughly. I, I'm not sure, but if, if it's every year a million dollars.
No, the, the total, the total to complete the, the contracted work should be maybe roughly under a million dollars.
But we're paying a million dollars annually in delay?
Not annually.
Okay, so what is, what is, what is this slide telling me?
The, the total amount should, should come to a, a, a million dollars to finish up the unfinished work.
Okay, got it.
The delay claim.
And the delay claim.
Yes.
Okay.
So, and that, that should provide us with sixty lots in the increment one.
Got it, got it. This is not, so I, I misheard Darrell when you said is primarily the delay claims. This is, this is the projected amount to finish once, once we get the green light to do that and then to fund these.
So the investment, the investment put in so far, it, it's like fourteen million dollars.
Right.
So nothing to show for it yet. So we're hoping that a, a million dollars more and we can complete the work. Working with Department of Health and US Army Corps of Engineers to take care of the UXO situation. Then we're getting close to.
Yeah, and I know there's some development in, in that, that area, but, but beyond the scope of today's meeting. Yeah, we can maybe talk offline on that one. But thank you for explaining that, that million dollar number. I'm going to move on to. Slide forty-one. Princess Kahano Estates Sewer Improvements. This is my last question. No, I'm sorry. It's, it's slide forty-two. Kapalei Sewer Repairs. You mentioned that a couple of times.
Sorry, Commissioner.
No. Yeah, my, my fault for making you run through this again. So Darrell, while, while they're trying to find it, the question, so. We contract with the, a developer to develop the project. They're supposed to provide sewer improvements that are code and are compliant and so that the city and will take over that project. And then not, but now there's some deficiencies. Is that because from the time we struck that deal? The, it's changed, the requirements have changed, so we have to upgrade the system to be able to dedicate or whatever the, whatever we do with the city and county?
Generally, the contractor or developer gives a one-year warranty on all the, all the improvements. In this case, Princess Kahano, I think, was built probably about twenty years ago.
Okay.
So what we're fixing are basically normal wear and tear. Just to bring it, bring it up to the standards that the city requires. I mean, when, when we did, the first one we've done with them was Kapuni Village in Wainai. And that wasn't, was only a couple of years old when we started the process. And they still required it to do camera work and fix some little minor things. It may have been just their stalling tactic, but. It may have been just their stalling tactic, but they're, they're really um asking for a lot before they turn, take it over from us.
So going forward, if we uh if we institute the dedication or to the city and county within the one-year warranty period, then we can rely upon the, the warranty for the cut, the developer to come in and make these fixes.
Right.
But is, are you, are you saying that's just not possible with, with the, with the city folks? The, they, they just don't work that quickly or?
Uh, we, well, we could probably start doing it now, but uh until with the act, I think one, two twenty-seven or, in, in with the act that required the city to take over our improvements, uh that was only passed a few years ago.
Okay.
So um, and we, we, we haven't finished any development since that time.
Got it.
But, yeah.
But the plan is going forward.
Going forward.
We build it.
We'll get it turned over to them as quick as possible.
Dedicate as quick as possible so that if there's some deficiency, we're, we're looking at the warranty, warranty claim with the, yeah. Thank you.
Um, next up is Commissioner Neves, followed by Commissioner Freitas and then Helm. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks, Chair. Uh, thanks, Daryl. And yeah, I had the same questions about the remedial work and I think, yeah, it looks, sounds like it was a delaying tactic by the county. And hopefully we'll get that. I, I'm just concerned about how much money we've spent over the years on uh remedial work. I'm, I'm sure it's, it bites into our budget. Uh, one, a, a couple of other things, and I don't need to refer to, uh, I'm referring back to your, um, your maintenance uh agreements or your maintenance budget. Uh, for Anna Hola Kulianna, you showed two hundred fifty thousand dollars. You know what that is specifically for? Is that for surveying or lots or?
I think that is for planning purposes.
Okay.
Familiar with that program.
Okay, and then the, the Anna Hola Dam, uh the dam, looks like dam reservoir additional improvements. Is that for, uh, some of that funds for a retention pond for the Kulianna ag water?
Uh, again, I'm not sure what that uh
Okay.
Specific uh requested for.
Okay, I, I can circle back with, with, uh, with um the, the boss, but I'll tell him you're doing it. Yeah, okay, very good. That's all I had, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mahalo, Dennis. Commissioner Freitas.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Daryl and Brian and staff for putting this presentation together. Uh, to kind of piggyback a little bit off of uh what Commissioner Koopu was saying. Uh, thank you for clarifying that to have had some of the same questions that he had. Uh, to jump down to the Kauai High Road, uh, is that one million dollars tied into that too? Uh, in addition to the lullaby infrastructure finishing that portion off as well as the contractors, I guess fines for lack of better words. Is the Kauai High Road cost tied into that too, or is that separate? And exactly what is the, what exactly is the, uh, just having tail or that, yeah, you folks have for the Kauai, Kauai Road?
I'm bringing up Kelbert again. He's the project manager for that.
That's for our La La Milo Phase One intersection. Um, that's a separate contract.
Okay.
Still under negotiations, but still stopped because of the UXO requirement.
Yes. So is that that road that's unfinished? That's about maybe twenty, thirty yards from connecting back in, from the, from the subdivision back into Kauai Road, tying back into Kauai Road?
Yeah, so the new bridge a- and the paving work is done. It's the right-term lanes on Kauai High Road that has to be installed. So we have to work with Hawaiian Telecom to relocate uh several of the utility poles.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The telephone pole is right there in the corner, right?
But that should be getting started up pretty soon.
Okay, one more quick question about the Kahu water as well as the pool cup water and the Kahu lots. Uh, legislative appropriation, have we already acquired those funds or are we going to be asking for those? The Kahu water and the lots that you, you folks spoke about earlier and the pool cup water. I think for both of those you referred to, and I can't, I can't remember what slide it is offhand. I apologize for that. Uh, I think you guys mentioned that you're looking for legislative funds to, to finish those projects off. I was wondering, did you folks, do we, did we already acquire those funds or would we have to ask for those on this coming session?
I think it's slide thirty-two. The sub-point one, yeah?
Yeah, yeah.
Sarah is, uh, Charles Kud is the project manager for Kahu.
Okay.
Sorry, what was the question?
Uh, it's basically if we've acquired those legislative appropriations already or is something we'd be asking for in the future?
Um, we do have our phase one ongoing, so that's, and we did previously ask for phase two. Um, but we have been able to put that into contract and then we're supposed to have an interim phase to um get that water filling station distribution going. So the ask is for the long-term phase of the water line being relocated to the roadway and the ladder rows to each of the existing twenty-five pastoral lot.
That's for Kahu, right?
Kahu, yeah, and the um twenty-five Kamoa.
Okay. And then uh what about the pool cup water? Um, the funding for that, has that been secured already or was that need to be asked for in the next session? My camera slide is either offhand. I apologize.
Rick Spear is the project manager for that one.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question. My hearing aid batteries went dead, so.
No, I was just, just asking about, because you know, the water, this pool cup of water is, it's, it's a major issue in our community. Just was wondering if the legislative funds were already uh secured or we'd be looking for that, asking for that in the future?
No, we'll have to secure those funds. Um, the pool cup of water systems right now, I went in for it's ready to go out for bids for the O and M. And then we'll go out for any of the major items that need to be replaced.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, what was your name?
Richard Spear.
Oh.
I'm with the R and M. Okay, Haianai is the only ones with.
Okay, it's nice to see the face with the name, you know, so I, I still don't, can't put you guys all together, so thank you for that.
Pretty easy, just the all-of-wake guy.
Yeah, I get your emails and stuff, but I didn't. Thank you.
Yeah, Kay, Haianai with the repair and maintenance side.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Okay, um, Commissioner Helm?
Mahalo, Chair. And thank you, Brian and Daryl, for your presentation. Several questions I have. Uh, Waianalo regarding the forty-nine subsistence egg lot and the two hundred twenty-seven residential lots. Uh, is the funding in place for that through the legislature or are you using also using two seventy-nine? And it, and you indicated that the construction will be starting in twenty twenty-five. Is that correct?
Uh, the current contract for the uh planning is through legislative funding. Uh, that contract will be expiring at the end of the year. And so we're looking for uh new funds to continue whatever comes out of the environmental assessment process. Uh, specifically designing and engineering the, uh, the new roadways. Uh, once that's completed, then we'll come back again for construction funds.
And that, and you're going to the ledge for that, right?
Um, you have this through the ledge or trust funds?
Okay. Uh, my next question is for uh Mulukai, the Kalamula egg lots. Uh, you've indicated there's fifty-one subsistence slots. And that one, you're, you're requesting one million dollars. Is that for design?
Uh, right, that would be for the engineering contract that we're currently negotiating.
Do you have any idea of as far as when this particular project will start?
I'm sorry, missed that.
Would you have any idea when uh, uh, this project would start? Like an estimate time, like uh two years, one year from now?
Oh, just we're negotiating a contract. It should, should start before the end of the year.
Okay, thank you. And then uh also you mentioned about Maeva, those sixty-six lots. Now, are these lots already awarded or they, they're additional lots that uh will be developed?
For Kalamula?
No, Naeva.
Naeva, um, I believe some were awarded during acceleration. So at least some, some of those lots as well as some new lots.
Okay, and then my final question is for Kalamula and Kapakia and Onali uh requesting funding for drainage improvement. Uh, is that uh going to be requested to the next legislation? See, I don't know the numbers of.
Yeah, those are, those are from the uh legislative appropriate for funds.
So is those funds already appropriated? For the, uh, the drainage for Kalamula, Kapakia, Onali?
Yeah.
It has?
Yeah, the, these ones are for uh the planning and design.
Okay, that's, that's all I need. Thank you.
Thank you. Mahalo, Zach. Um, Commissioner Kalikini?
Hmm, thank you, Chair. Mahalo, uh, mahalo, Brian, Daryl, yeah, for the presentation. Just a couple of small things. So what, what we're really looking at is, I just wanted to clarify for me, um, is the development budget for fiscal twenty twenty-four, yeah?
That's correct.
So if there's, is that, is that correct? That's what we're talking about?
Right, we're looking to the, the next fiscal year's budget.
Right, right. So eventually the budget will have to come back to the commission and we have to make a decision on it.
Right, well, uh, there'll be a separate um for approval action at the next commission meeting.
Okay, so I was just curious, because um like, for example, on Hawaii Island, I know like right now we're going through like in Honolulu, yeah, we're going through phase one. I don't see phase two. I mean, is that, is that something that perhaps could come under two seven nine? And, 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 and along with that, Daryl, is act two seven nine budgeting and plans and whatnot? That's separate from what we're talking about, right?
That's correct, yeah. That'll be a sep- uh, separate approval discussion.
Okay. All right, so yeah, so I just, I just wanted to understand that. Uh, one of our testifiers talked about a line item for geothermal. Um, I, I, I would support a line item because, you know, two sessions ago, but, because we got to go to the ledge with this, right? Um, two sessions ago, the ledge appropriated five hundred thousand and the, and so we've got a contractor that's utilizing that to do uh due diligence work like um to do surveys, uh to see the potential for geothermal resource on DHHL lands. I think putting a line item in, in this is, would be appropriate because I know we, we talked about it during act two seven nine and beneficiaries, you know, and we all concluded, don't use two seven nine for, for geothermal. But now that we're going back to the ledge and now that we had the support to do the initial surveys, it would make sense to have something in for twenty twenty-four.
Uh, what we're showing here for fiscal twenty twenty-four was, has already been approved by the legislature.
Okay.
For this fiscal year. All right, they gave us a lump sum so we could possibly um move some monies around to, to accommodate that. But if they um give us a specific appropriation like they did for the Hawaii Kai acquisition, for instance, we would show it as a specific line item on, on this budget.
I see. So we've already been working on this and going back and forth with the ledge and financial folks. So I, I am, I wouldn't want to move stuff away just to make a new line item. I was hoping that we could make a new line item separate from what we are already proposing.
Uh, well, we're still working on finalizing this, this budget for you for the uh, for the Seminoles, for, for your approval. So I can say we can add in a separate line item and, you know, move some monies around. Uh, I, I don't know what amount you have in mind.
Six million?
Six million? Okay, well, well, when Stuart gets back, we, we, we can discuss, discuss that and see what we can.
I just don't want it to adversely impact what we've already proposed of be separate in addition.
But, but it will, right? Because it, it, we're taking from one to fund another one at this point, right? That's, that's, that's the only process. It's not like we're going to go back to the ledge and ask for six million. If anything, that's next fiscal, next fiscal go-around, right?
Right, we can, we can do that also to add it to our wish list when we, that we submit to the ledge.
Didn't, um, didn't the ledge, didn't, didn't the ledge, I guess my question, didn't the ledge allocate FY twenty-three, twenty-four? Um, it, ten million for projects like, like this moving forward? Do, do, do you recall that in uh HB three hundred? No?
Offhand, I don't recall.
No, you, you folks don't know anything there? Can you answer that, Brian? Do you have any, do you have any idea on that, what I'm talking about on the um?
There was a.
HB three hundred of ten million for FY twenty-three and twenty-four or further, can you?
It, it, it was, it was last year or current fiscal year.
Correct.
And then, then the, the period that we're actually discussing, uh, starting on July first. I think the larger question though, um, is what would the funding be used for? Is it for construction? Is it, because we're talking about two very separate types of budgets. One would be the operating side. Um, and yes, we did get ten million for that and that's largely going to be used for um as of right now, again, and not getting into too much detail for FY twenty-four because we're going to talk about it next week, but in a nutshell, um, it's for uh grants through RFP process for the homesteads. Uh, it would be used for repair and maintenance at our district offices as well as some R and M um issues that we have and our uh dislocation here. So that's, that's the operating side.
Do you have a breakdown from the ten million? How much it will go for homesteads, associations, LDD and other?
Yes, we will have a, a more accurate one next week at a, at the commission meeting.
Okay, I'll look forward to that breakdown.
Um, getting, getting a little bit further though into the geothermal question.
Thank you.
Uh, I would just have a question. My, my question would be, what would the monies be used for? Because if, if it's for construction, then it would be a, a CIP item or basically funded by bonds. Generally, we don't do cash CIP, which means general fund CIP. Um, operating funds, uh, just because it's precious, right? I mean, we, we treat, we use it for operating purposes and something like geothermal, especially if it's for anything that's going to last twenty years, we can charge to the CIP budget.
Got it. So my, my thoughts are the appropriation that we're using right now is to do surface studies.
So surface studies would be, and that would be six million?
No, no, no.
Oh, sorry, never like.
That's the five hundred thousand.
Never mean to be so surprised, but.
The six million is, is subsurface. That's why it's a costly area. So the five hundred thousand that was appropriated is for surface, you know, surface work. Uh, but six million would be subsurface.
So it's not just uh it's actual work?
Yes.
Like they're going into the ground.
Drilling a hole.
Feas- feasibility.
It's a feasibility study. That, I mean, that potentially could come through the CIP side.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I think at a minimum, at least we get the discussion, yeah, uh, on, on the, on the table. So we're aware and it's not just we're doing this surface stuff now and don't do anything going, you know, further.
Right.
Don't consider anything further in it.
Right.
Yes, thank you. Mahalo.
Mahalo, Mike. Um, I do have a final question. It's not necessarily for you. I guess I go on Kahea, Paula Aila, because I want to go back to slide twenty-eight. The Commissioner Kaupu brought up the twenty-eight lot awards that are pending. I would like an update on that. I'm not sure if you can provide that, but I think that's an awards question.
I think it would be, yes.
Is that the which one, Mr. O?
Uh, Kehiki Nui, sorry, and that's slide twenty-eight, because, and the reason I ask, we get a lot of questions about those lots yet to be awarded, so if um, I don't know, Paula, if you're out there somewhere, if you're available, mahalo.
Mr. O, can I ask my closing question too?
Yeah.
Daryl, so um, I understand, um, I, I, I watched that YouTube, so you were involved in the May thirtieth. Darryl, so, um, I understand, um, I, I, I watched that YouTube, so you were involved in the May thirtieth, you folks, uh, the department had a, um, what is it, an RFP workshop for all the developers that came together mainly to talk about Act two seventy nine on May thirtieth. You're, you were on YouTube, your whole meeting. You were there opening. Bring it back now. We know we get these senior moments, but, um, yeah. So what I, I wanted you to kinda elaborate, elaborate is what, do you normally do, what was the meeting about? Bringing all the, all the developers together islandwide on, on Act two seventy nine?
Um, I don't know, I wasn't involved in that.
Okay, you and Kali, you, you know, and you folks, you actually opened the entire meeting. I have it on YouTube.
Okay, I, I think the, I think the, um, meeting you talked about was the, uh, pre-proposal meeting for acquisition.
Yeah.
You know, so, uh, yeah, that, we just put on an RFP, a second RFP for land acquisition. And, um, we did have a, uh, pre-proposal meeting explaining our process. Uh, them giving us proposals for land acquisition and/or development. And what, what they had to give back to us for our considerations.
Okay.
Uh, the, uh, proposals are due, I believe, the end of, end of this month. We gave them, we gave them about, about six weeks to prepare proposals and turn them over to us.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Darryl.
So once, once we get the proposals in, you know, we'll start another spreadsheet like we.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Yeah, that was a very interesting meeting to watch, um, listening to all the developers that were gonna be involved in the movement, yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. But just Paula.
I, I think that's it. Uh, Paula, mahalo for making yourself available.
I got someone beckoning me. Aloha, Commissioners, Paula Aila, Acting Administrative Contact and Awards Division. Nice to see you, folks. Uh, there are questions about, I believe, Kahiki Nui and other awards?
The, the one that I'm currently, um, focused on is one of the slides we have here, it's slide twenty eight. That's specific to Kahiki Nui.
Yes.
And it mentions twenty eight unencumbered lots that have been surveyed, state, and currently available for award.
Yes.
The reason I bring that up, that, that is, um, we have very strong beneficiary interest on when that's going to occur.
Yes. Uh, it has been a conversation the last couple of years. Where we are right now in my conversation with Chairman is we're looking at all of the awards coming up. And, um, in order that he can provide me guidance on how to prioritize all of the awards. So the only one I have approval for right now, while, I guess we're in just a pause, um, is for Panaeva, the subsistence ag lots, that actually we're working on right now. The letters will be going out, hopefully by Mon- Tuesday, actually, uh, to be awarded at the end of July. So that's the only one right now. And I'm sorry, I don't have more information. I think he was also going to speak with you about those Kahiki Nui lots, because it came up at the meeting in Waimea. So I think as he's putting together the plan, awards is, you know, just trying to get that guidance, so we can start to schedule everything.
Okay, so thank you for that. And I guess my question is, it has been a two-year.
Yes.
Or so, um, wait time. So I'm just trying to, and I guess I can have that conversation with the Chair.
Yes.
Cause I, I'm not sure what, how much more deliberation is required to move it forward, so. Um, anyway, in response to what our beneficiaries continue to ask us to do, I, I would like to see that elevated in the top tier. So, um, anyway, but I can have that discussion.
Okay.
With our Chair.
Any other questions about awards? Okay, my Kaii, oh, excuse me.
How, how's your staffing level, or how's your, are you guys?
I have one.
Fully, yeah. So you still have open positions that you're trying to?
Um, I know that's another discussion that's ongoing, as, um, again, my understanding, um, it's not that we're not going to get help. There will be help, but it may be external help. You know, so we're trying to figure that out right now.
So this, this pause you mentioned, it's basically because there's plenty work, but
Yes.
Not enough hands to do all of it at the same time.
Right. So with the influx of lots that are coming on board through the presentation, through Darryl's presentation, I think we're just trying to figure out, okay, what's coming when, and so we're in, I guess, a planning and preparation mode, from my perspective, to just kinda make sure we queue everything up. And as you know, sometimes it takes a, a while to hire staffing. So while we're looking at that, then my understanding is we can also consider external help. So we can get things moving when that trigger pulls.
Okay.
You're welcome. Okay?
Anyone else?
Thank you, Paula.
You're welcome. Aloha.
Aloha.
Mahalo, Darryl.
Thank you, Darryl.
Sorry, bear with me. Um, thank you. Really appreciate you guys' patience. Um, I know sometimes this can be not the most interesting topic, so, um, Darryl, thank you for keeping them busy while I was collecting my wits. Um, let me just queue up.
It's very interesting, this is sometimes.
Yeah. So just a, just a few more slides, um, the loan budget that we have, sorry, I'm getting an echo here. Our loans budget for FY twenty four, it's, it's not really to talk about the budget per se, but it's more to talk about the funds. We have five different funds that provide loans, um, to our beneficiaries. Um, the first is our Hawaiian Home Loan Fund, uh, which is used for things like section two oh nine, um, type transactions, um, which includes surrenders, cancellations, and re-awards. Um, the Hawaiian Home, the second one is the Hawaiian Home General Loan Fund. Now, this is similar to the Hawaiian Home Loan Fund in that it, it also funds the same type of transactions, but also does direct loan financing, um, as well as real property taxes and guaranteed loans. The third one is our Hawaiian Home Trust, uh, which is used for government insured and guaranteed loans, such as FHA two forty seven and USDA loans. And then the other portion of the Hawaiian Homes Trust Fund is used to write off low interest, uh, and loan receivables, uh, just in case a home is in a condition that it needs to be, um, demolished, uh, or the borrower, borrower still has a loan, uh, amount on the books. And that's loans. In terms of our operating budget, um, we, uh, this past year, um, we got approximately the same amount as we did in prior years. Um, so we're talking about a biennium. On the slide here, you'll see the current year, which is our appropriation was twenty five point seven nine five. And then in the biennium, we receive roughly twenty six point four and twenty six point eight million, respectively, in FY twenty four and twenty five. Um, unfunded positions continues to be a little bit of an issue for us, although we do have two hundred authorized positions. Approximately nineteen of them are not funded, so we have basically funds, we can, through the legislative and of course allocation process, we can fill a hundred and eighty one positions. In terms of our, uh, Hawaiian Homes Administration account, um, we're requesting four point eight million, same exact as last year. That was also our appropriation ceiling that the legislature gave. And in terms of our Hawaiian Home Operating Fund, uh, the total amount, um, is three point seven four, and that is an appropriation ceiling, again, that the legislature provided to us. In terms of our non-appropriated funds, uh, we are requesting to use roughly seven million um, from the Hawaiian Home Operating Fund. And in terms of NERF, um, one point three million. So that's one point one million for the RFP grant process, and then two hundred thousand roughly for, um, capacity type building. And then finally, the, uh, the HHL Revenue Bond, uh, Special Fund of three point two million. So FY twenty four looks something like this. Again, next week will be harder numbers. Um, we are, uh, going through the process right now of, um, you know, finalizing our numbers. You'll, you'll note that I, I should have actually started with, there were three revised pages, um, that we had asked Leah to put in, and it's kinda Leah's fault, because, um, you know, she cracked the whip. She said, hey, Brian, you gotta be Paul by a certain day, and, and unfortunately, you know, our numbers are not, you know, finalized. Um, we literally just got done meeting with the divisions and, um, the Chair, uh, last week, and we, we needed to get everything to, um, uh, Leah and Louise by, uh, Tuesday. And so it was, it was, you know, we were cranking, so we apologize for those revisions, um, that we had to make. Um, there weren't very many changes, uh, in those revisions. There were some numbers that, that had changed, of course, um, but they will change into next week as well.
Are we gonna get those changes early, though, before?
I hope to, Commissioner, yes. Yeah, yeah, we, the, the plan is not to get it to you the, at the midnight hour. So, yeah. She gave me the look right now, you see. She's scary, you know, so. Yeah, that's right. You guys are not gonna be looking at this anyway, right? So. And finally, our, our, our last one is our fund balances. Um, uh, at the end of the, of the, of the upcoming fiscal year, um, we're, we're looking at these fund balances. You know, there's no, there's no magic bullet for fund balances. We just take historical numbers. In this case, for most of these fund, to come up with these numbers and these projections, we use the last six years as a general idea of what, what we're gonna be looking at. Um, overall, we are pretty healthy, um, a- a- as a department. We have funding. Um, sometimes not always, sometimes the funding that we do have is, is, we can't use it in a certain way, so it does hamstring us. Um, but, yeah, I think we're, we're gonna be in pretty good shape, given, given our history. And that is the end of the presentation, unless you guys have questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Brian. Commissioners, any questions?
Brian, on the, on the operating budget.
Yeah.
On the Wine Homes Operating Fund, the operating portion, that seven man, seventy four thousand and twenty three, such a odd number, and then we roll it forward into fiscal twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five, wh- what is that number? That, that's like, we're capped at that number? That's, that's why it's replicated each year, or?
It's just generally the amount that, that has stor- has historically been, um, in that, at that level. Since twenty twenty one, um, uh, I'm sorry, in fiscal year twenty three this year, we went up to, uh, seven zero seven four zero two three. Um, I, I apologize, I don't really understand how that number came about.
Yeah.
Um, but we can look into that and, 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 and give you a, a.
But you just used this year's actual, and you just rolled it forward into twenty four and twenty five.
That's correct. Our budget from the legislature, um, did, was, was flat, right, this year? And so a lot of the numbers didn't change. Um, we, you'll notice that we did do a little bit of a reduction um, in the overall, uh, budget. And if you look at page twenty nine, you'll see that there's a reduction of roughly four sixteen thou- a hun- four hundred sixteen thousand, and that's largely because, in a nutshell, the positions that we have now are not budgeted at the current salary levels. So we needed to ensure that, that we can accommodate, um, you know, the, the salaries for employees.
Okay. So, so the, the process is, is, is Chair told, and therefore he tells you, hey, it's flat because the, the ledge did?
No, we actually recommend to, to Chair.
It works its way up.
Correct.
To keep it flat and leave it at.
Correct. Yeah.
Twenty twenty three is actual for twenty twenty four.
That is correct, yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Thank you, Russell. Commissioners. Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, yeah, thank you, thank you, Brian. So you mentioned you have hundred eighty one positions. Is that Positions vacancy open?
No, no, no. These are totally, these are hundred eighty one funded positions.
Funded positions, so.
In terms of our current.
How many vacancies right now currently you have open? I continue to hear that in the last ledge. I forgot that number pressed on this department.
So right now.
Are we filling our vacancies?
We are. Um, we're, we're actually, you know, plugging away. The, the issue, um, that we're, we're faced with, um, as long as, as lo- along with private and public sector, uh, departments is there's a lot of folks that just don't wanna work.
Well, but are, are they qualified too? That, that's really important, because this department is unique. You have to have people who are qualified to come in and to know what, whether it's lot development, whether it's even being a cashier, whether it being the cashier, I mean, this totally department, you just can't get anybody and, and then put them in there if they were a waitress and they don't have the, they don't have the background, because it's gonna be difficult, you know?
Yeah. That, that's absolutely correct. Um, it's not easy to fill an engineer three, four, five, when the private sector obviously pays a little bit more than we do as well.
Exactly.
So, um, yeah. The qualification, as well as the, the shortage of, of, of people, is what gets us.
So, um, maybe I can ask you this. How many, how many staffs do we have in the Compliance Department currently?
We have, uh, one enforcement officer and one support staff.
And the enforcement officer is who?
Uh, that's Kit.
Oh, okay. And then what is the other one?
Uh, Veronica is the support staff.
Okay. Do we have a position, um, as a DHHL liaison that goes out to the, uh, associations? Do we have a position called that way?
I.
A community liaison, a Department of Wine Homes Community Liaison. Is there a position called?
There is no particular position that, um, does that. We have an individual that, um, works with, you know, beneficiaries, um, as, as well as, that could be associations, that could be neighborhood boards, that could be specific beneficiaries.
That represent the department or the governor?
That represents the, the department.
The Chairman?
Yes. That's correct.
Okay. Um, and so that can be requested by a neighborhood board to the department? If we particularly want that staff to come to this particular neighborhood board, um, that encompass a large amount of Hawaiian homestead?
Uh, I'm not sure what the process is, but yes, um, you know, I think, I think for many of us, particularly in, in planning and LDD, um, LMD, you know, we'll go to associations, we'll go to neighborhood boards to, um, respond to any questions, either in person or, or over the phone via email.
And, um, so positions right now, um, you hire exempt and contracts, then you have civil service?
Uh, we have exempt civil service, and, correct, and we, we don't have very many contracts, other than our vendors and our contractors, but we are looking at, um, uh, using either a temporary agency, um, or, uh, you know, there's, there's temporary agencies who do, um, who handle positions such as receptionists. And then there's temporary agencies that actually get into the more technical engineers and such, but, um, we have yet to form a relationship with anyone yet, contractually.
So we're, we're on the right track of hiring? We have new individuals filling positions, um, that, uh, that is really needed for the department to move forward?
I, I, yeah, I believe so. I mean, you, you know, we're, we're going in the right direction. Of course, I think everyone wants a direction to go a little bit faster. Um, but, you know, we're, we're, we're plugging away, um, and, and, uh, you know, some of what hurts us as well is DHERD themselves, who help us with civil service positions, has a thirty percent vacancy right now.
Yeah, because you know, in the past, I, I, for the years that I've been serving here, all I hear is like acting positions. I'm acting LMD, I'm acting this, acting that. And they was here like thirty years, but they still got the title of acting. I, I didn't, I didn't quite understand their position, their classification. Why are they still acting when they've been here twenty five years? Aren't they civil service? I mean, how did, how, how, how did, how did that become? And, you know, it, it, it just, it, it was bothersome of the position and classification they were holding, whether they're SR ten, SR twenty four. I mean, you know, that was interesting. In closing, I just wanted to make mention that, um, the reception that you have there currently. In closing, I just wanted to make mention that the reception that you have there currently, I really commend her. And I've heard it from a lot of homesteaders, when she comes here, I think her name is, I'm not sure her name.
Anohia.
Anohia. I mean, her aloha and her greeting has just changed the ambiance of walking in. I mean, honestly, I mean, in the past, we really didn't have that spirit of aloha. And that was mentioned a lot of times. But I just wanted to take that back, is that she has just the spirit of aloha when you walk in. I walk in, I don't even tell her who I am.
Thank you. We're all going to let her know.
Please. And it was a really nice change when you come into the reception area. And it was, a lot of the homesteaders had, you know, when I go to Mokopuni and go to the meetings, they expressed that. And I said I was going to bring it up to the department that you have some excellent staff, you know. And I can go all by names, you know, but just that particular reception, it's brought a great highlight to the Department of welcoming beneficiaries, that this is their home, this is their building, that they can come and get some help from your staff. So I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mahalo, Patty. Mahalo, Brian. Any further questions? I think I'm hearing someone. Okay, Kalomai, go ahead. Commissioner Helm?
Yeah, mahalo, Chair. Mahalo, Brian. You might have mentioned it earlier, but out of that 181 funding positions, how many are still vacant?
I did not mention it, Commissioner, because I was scrambling to try to find the number.
You don't know the amount of vacancies there are?
May I email you folks that response? Okay.
That would be good. That would be great. Okay, so, yeah, the final question that I have regarding the operational budget for Molokai District. You know, maybe it's premature to bring this up, but you know, back within the past two years, we've discussed about improving the water bill, billing system on Molokai because it's prehistoric. And we wanted to see if there's, I know Huan and Gigi discussed that with myself and to the Commission in the past. I just wanted to know if there's going to be any funding for that, so I just wanted to share that. Because, yeah, we've had a problem with people getting their bills for water, you know, late. So, and they, the workers did mention that, you know, their system is old and they're not, you know, maybe they need to update their computers and what have you. But I just wanted to bring that up. Thank you very much. Mahalo.
Thank you.
Thank you, Zach. Mahalo. Commissioners, we have any additional manoa for Brian? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to make a final call for public testimony if anyone is available.
Brian, one more. You're going to, you're going to come back with us next time on the question I asked earlier on that breakdown of the funding on the?
The 10 million.
Can I get that? Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, not having any further public testimony. Mahalo, everyone, for being here today. Commissioners, for your questions. Our staff, mahalo for making yourself available, Brian.
Chair, can I ask a favor real quick? Because, you know, they're all gone. Darryl's staff is all gone, but my staff is still here and I want to thank them. And it's Jeff and Sharon because every year they're plugging away at this and, you know, I'm just up here talking. And they're the ones who really do the work, so I appreciate that.
Who's your staff, Brian?
Got Jeff over here and then Sharon right back here.
Thank you very much. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, I mean, Darryl had more presentation than me, so he's the reason why it's so long, but, I mean, his staff, they work hard as well, so.
Awesome.
And I wish they were here, so, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Brian. And I see Dennis has a question, but thank you for acknowledging your staff. Commissioner Neves, go ahead.
Yes, Chair, I just have a question. I don't, I don't believe we can do this in public, in an open public meeting. It has to do with the management letter from the auditor. And part of the letter states?
We cannot, that's not been agendaized, Commissioner.
Okay, all right, very good. No problem. Thank you.
So does that go into executive and in June meeting then?
Yeah, it would have to be in the executive session, but it was in the package, so that's why I mentioned.
Thank you for the question.
Thank you.
Okay. It was good. Okay, so seeing that there are no further questions, I think we have come to the end of our meeting. Our next commission meeting is on June 26 and 27 here at Halepono'i. Oh, I feel a tap.
Oh, no, no, just love. We have another new staff.
So Diamond Badajos came on last week. She is our new ICRO officer, so she's our IIO.
Very good.
So I just started just over a week ago.
And that clarification, that's whose position was that? Cedric. Oh, okay. Nice to meet you.
Yes, nice to be here. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Welcome. What's your name again?
Diamond Badajos.
Diamond.
Diamond, yes.
Diamond.
Thank you.
D I A M O N D.
He has like the ring.
Okay.
You have an excellent staff.
The diamond in the rough.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Excellent staff, too.
Okay, so any other well-deserved acknowledgements before I hammer down?
I got one. I got one. Mahalo to Chair Randy Awo for conducting the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have an announcement then, thank you. And so my announcement is to wish every father or father to be a very blessed Happy Father's Day this weekend.
Mahalo, thank you.
I wanted to wish you a great weekend.
Thank you, Patty.
Mahalo.
Okay, so I am getting ready to hammer out. We are adjourned. Mahalo, everyone.
Aloha. Good to see you.